Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Clinton McMullen is the pastor of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Mars if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray this day for our city, for Mayor Cornett, for all our city council, and all who serve in our police and fire departments, as well as all our city workers, that you would guard and protect them all and guide them into all things which are well pleasing in your sight. And Heavenly Father, this day we pray for your strength and protection for all our men and women who serve in the armed forces of our nation throughout the world, but especially the Oklahoma Guard units who are serving in Afghanistan. Support them in this time of war and in times of peace, keep them from all evil, granting them courage and loyalty, and granting that in all things they may serve honestly and without reproach. And finally, oh Lord, during this Thanksgiving week, we thank you for the many gifts you have given us through this past year as a people and a city. Continue to bless us and all here with your guidance and in your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, for the past several years, an organization called America's Promise Alliance has honored communities across the country as the 100 best communities for young people. We have entered this a few times, and we have won a few times. In fact, we have won for the fifth time this year. So let's show our appreciation, and let me bring up some people who are responsible for that. Everybody come up. Everybody has to stand up. Come forward. We have an award. And here it is. And Jane, you have been front and center on the city's efforts in this way. And so would you kind of summarize what we entered this year as proving to the rest of America that we are one of the 100 best places for young people?
Well, we talked about several different programs in our application. We talked about the youth council that we've got that works with city council in terms of promoting youth leadership, and we also talked about helping homeless youth, and several of those programs, in addition to the fitness programs that you're involved with and that the city is involved with, as well as several nonprofit organizations in the city.
And the food bank is something we're also very proud of, and Rodney Bivens is here. Rodney, I know the food bank distributes food through the backpack system, and a lot of families are benefiting from that.
Yeah, it's a great program. We're very privileged to be able to offer that program to Oklahoma City Public Schools, Elementary Schools. We served over 10,000 chronic hungry children in that program last year, 374 elementary schools. So it's through being part of the city of Oklahoma City allows us to do that.
And I hope you don't mind me continuing to prompt you, because I know this is the time of year when a lot of families run short on their budgets and could use the extra help, and we'd love to be able to let people know how they can help the food bank.
Absolutely. Governor Powell has had a fund in food drive, and it ends actually today at the state capitol with a press conference. So people can contribute their time, their resources, or they can donate food to the food bank, especially during the holidays as well as all the winter months.
All right, thank you. And Roy Williams is here with the chamber, and Debbie Hampton is here representing United Way, and of course Debbie Martin here does so much inside the building for the city council staff. Thank you all for your efforts here. And once again, let it be known, Oklahoma City, one of the 100 best places for young people in the United States. Let's show our appreciation to these people. We'll call the meeting to order and go to item 3A, B, and C. Council will remember an executive session recently we met to discuss the performance of the three employees who report directly to the nine of us, and we have established new salaries for those three employees. We did some computations in the meantime, and I have the numbers. So I'm going to read the numbers aloud, and then I'll ask for someone to make a motion, and we'll vote on it at that point. The new salary for the municipal auditor will be $132,837.52. The new salary for the municipal counselor will be $163,494. And the new salary for the city manager position will be $215,184.6. Have a motion?
No.
And a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And I'll just add that we're very proud of not only these three positions and the people that occupy them, but for the entire staff that work for them, over 4,000 employees for the city of Oklahoma City, obviously responsible for making this city proceeding and prospering in the manner that it is. So, yes, Larry, go ahead.
Your Honor, if you would, I think the citizens might be interested in comments on how we arrived at those figures.
Well, it was based on, as I recall, a 3% cost of living and then a 2% to represent the step raises that our traditional union-based employees receive. So it came to a 5% increase over the previous year's salary. Any other comments from council? All right, we'll move on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 15th, and 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 8th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have one this morning. Item 8C is a revocable right-of-way use permit with downtown OKC, and the incorrect date is listed on the agenda, and so we will place this item with the correct date will be placed on the next agenda.
Okay, so 8C is struck.
That's correct.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes.
Your Honor, just quickly, on item H, it's the change order for the new Southwest Library.
Well, we're not quite there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we'll be there next, though.
Yes.
Let me just vote on the PPA.
Sorry.
Passed unanimously. Now, adjourn OC PPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, do we have a second? All right, and David, it sounds like you want to talk on H.
Just to invite everyone, we do have a change order here for approval, and the library is pretty well completed. They have plans for their grand opening on December the 2nd, and I hope everyone from the council, whose time permits, can attend that grand opening. It is a long-awaited new library in South Oklahoma City that will benefit not just the immediate area, but all of South Oklahoma City, so we are really looking forward to the opening of that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Consent docket passed unanimously. We move on to the concurrence docket, which is... Rather, hey, we have a motion. How about a second? All right, comments or questions on the concurrence docket? Well, let's vote then. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item eight, these are items that require a separate vote, and we start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 1 at 10421 Northwest 10th Street. It's currently a double-A agricultural district, and it would become an R1 single-family residential district. Gary?
Anybody here to speak on this at all? Do we have the easement on this? I move the item.
How about a second?
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 4. The address is 600 Southeast 79th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become an I1 light industrial and I2 moderate industrial district. Pete?
Is there anyone here to speak, anybody speaking in opposition to this? Is the easement submitted? It says it's requested and not submitted, but it's here. I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 2. The address is 330 Northwest 59th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district. Ed?
There is legal representation here in favor, but there was no protest. If nobody else has signed up, I move to vote.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A3. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 1. The address is 9,000 West Britton Road. It's a planned unit development district, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Gary?
Anybody here to speak on this? Anybody signed up?
Anybody signed up on 8A4? Nope?
Move the item.
All right, how about a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item 8B is an item that would bring us, well, it brings the city's retirement plan into compliance with federal law, and we need to pass the amendment first and then the ordinance. And Wiley is here, if anybody has any questions on this item, but if not, then we need to vote on item 8B1. All right? Cast your votes on item 8B1. This is the amendment. It passed unanimously. And then item 8B2 is the actual ordinance. All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously as well. Item 8C has been struck, so we're on to item 8D, and this is selling of bonds.
Mayor, we really should change the order on this and approve item E before we do item D. Item E is actually naming the underwriters, and that should be done prior to the hearing and the resolution regarding the refunding.
Okay. So this is to select the underwriters, so we're going to vote on item 8E. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 8D is a public hearing regarding the sale of bonds, and I'll note that just this week, we were noted by Standard and Poor's and Moody's as getting our triple-A rating confirmed, and obviously that's very good news, and in these fiscal times, not very many cities are getting these types of ratings, and so we're fortunate and appreciative to our staff that works so hard in that area.
We're very pleased to get that. What we're doing here today is beginning the process to refund and refinance, basically we're refinancing some debt that we pass on the 2003, 2004, and 2005 bonds, and because of the interest rates where there are now, we can refinance those bonds and have some interest savings as we go forward. We've got some projections on what those savings will be, but we don't know what those actual savings will be until we get them priced and go into the marketplace. We are anticipating having these, the sale to be done in early December, but that's a little bit flexible, and we don't know exactly when we're going to do the sale. There are things that are happening. The super committee not making the decision last night has some issues, and if the market goes south a little bit, we may push it off. It's never a good idea to sell bonds during the holiday season, so we're going to try to do it in the first part of December, but we may push it back until actually after the first of the year, depending upon how the market, and that decision will be made with our underwriting team, our financial advisor, and our staff, based upon the market conditions as we see it over the next month or so.
We're voting on item 8D. Yeah, Larry?
Without holding you to it, what type of savings are you looking for? Craig?
Right now, the estimate is close to 7% or it's about $6.5 million over the life of those bonds that refunded. And that would go back into the debt, and it would reduce our debt cost into the future.
What are the arguments for and against waiving competitive bidding?
It's on a refunding, that's a great question. On a refunding, it almost has to be, I'm a competitive bid guy, but on a refinancing, it has to be. You can't really do one unless it's a negotiated sale because of the refunding, because you've got to fill the gaps in, and you've got to be a little bit flexible as you go forward with them. But when we issue revenue bonds through the Water Trust, or revenue bonds through the CAFPA, or Airport Trust, or when we do our general sales that we do every year, those are all competitive bids, and so that is our standard. But on negotiated sales, that isn't really possible.
All right, I guess we're ready to vote on item 8D. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F addresses our need for a new police headquarters and a new municipal courts complex. About a month ago, we decided to build it, and then last week, we talked about how to pay for it, and staff has presented the two options that we kind of decided that we wanted to look at. Do you want to summarize them, Jim?
Mayor, if I could summarize this a little bit, this goes back actually a number of years, back when we were putting together the bond issue in 2006 and 2007. The bond issue was voted on in 2007, but before that time, we had a proposal that came in. We looked at different options. We sized it and thought it was the best way to do a remodel on that existing facility. At that time, in '07, there were some that thought maybe we should build a new facility. It was decided at that time to go through remodel facility and go forward with the bond issue. Subsequent to that, we hired the architect when that came to council. The council said, "Look at both new and remodel as you go forward." So the consultant went off and did the report. As they did their report, there was a discovery to be a bus in a previous estimate on the square footage within the building, and because of that, it increased the additional square footage that was required to be added on to the remodel, and it also caused then staging issues to be done. It was determined that the police could not exist in the building as the remodel went done, and that pushed the cost up further beyond that. So we came up with, we have a gap of about $12 million, and so we decided a couple of months ago, or I guess about a month ago, we approved the preliminary report to go forward with two separate complexes, a court complex and a police headquarters complex, and come up with funding options. We presented five different options. We discussed those two different times before council. Last week, there was a consensus of council, I think there was a consensus anyway, to go with option 1 or 3, and so I've doctored resolutions to proceed with options 1 and 3. What are options 1 and 3? Option 1 would be to take that money from the MAPS 3 use tax, which we have, not officially, but we've certainly discussed that being set aside for public safety capital, and that would take us a year out of the overall replacement that we're going to have for public safety capital. Public safety capital of our fleet, helicopters, fire trucks, that type of thing, runs somewhere between $10 and $12 million a year, depending upon the year. This would take one year off that. Option 3, but there would be no repayment. We'd just take it out, use it, and go on down the road. Option 3 is you would take it out of that MAPS reuse tax, and then in association with that, we would raise our court costs with certain fines out there, and with that additional monies received from those fine increases, we would then repay the MAPS reuse tax, and it'd be about a nine-year payback, and over that nine-year period, we'd pay back about $1 million of interest on that, too. And so we're both taking it out of the MAPS reuse tax. One, we're taking it out for the facilities, the public safety facilities itself. The other one, we're taking it out, and we'd be repaying it over a nine-year period with an increased court cost on certain fines, and we would be bringing back that item to council within the next several weeks.
Ed, can I, I just want to clarify some of my remarks last week. Last week, I talked about maybe the problems with some of these studies and then the legitimacy, the impact of legitimacy on the bond. Then I talked to Meg and Jim and Pete, and they all indicated to me that the way I said it could be interpreted that the city staff, I mean, could have misled the public, or there was some purposeful intent, and I protested that I didn't say anything about city staff's actions, but rather the study, but they all said independently, "Well, the way you said it, it could be interpreted that way." So I find it hard to ignore that all three independently saying the same thing, and I just want to clarify that this isn't my issue. I wasn't here. I don't know the conversations or how it was presented to the public. Really, I just have, and I'm not sure what the motive would be, I don't have any opinion. I don't think there was any purposeful intent. My issue is really just two questions, and it really doesn't have to do with city staff. I mean, this problem, it has to do with the studies, and this predates when any of us were here in decades past. It's maybe not that frequent, but it is an issue and can continue to be an issue in the future unless it's addressed. And so one question I would have, and I proposed it to Kenny and Jim this week, is, you know, is it possible to put a liquidated damages provision in future contracts? Because even, we'll figure this out today, and we'll meet the shortfall, and we'll be okay, but we have a big ticket items coming in the future with design requirements. We have, I know that the Convention Center Hotel is going to be coming at us. We have all the MAPS projects, the rest of the 2007 bond. Is it possible to put a liquidated damages provision in future contracts? Just, you know, if there is a mistake, is it possible for those doing the studies to have some skin in the game and either refund some money or pay some damages back, and maybe in non-liquidated damages? Because the one thing that came up is it's very difficult to quantify what the damages are. Here, we're going to pull money from the MAPS reuse tax, and we'll get everything done, and I'm not sure what the damages would be, but is there some way, you know, just to prevent similar occurrences in the future?
Councilman Shadid and I talked about this on Saturday for a while, and one of the things I suggested to Councilman Shadid was a potential, we have a professional liaison committee made up of architects and engineers, and if we could frame this issue a little bit and take it to that professional liaison committee, Councilman Shadid can submit it, Kenny or I could submit it, and try to get some feedback from them as to what their thoughts are on this issue. To put things in context a little bit, we do in excess of $200 million a year in capital construction within the city. If you add the bond monies and what Water and Wastewater does, and what MAPS for Kids does, and what the airports does and other projects out there, we do a lot of capital construction, and for the most part, do it pretty well. We have, rarely do we have these types of issues, but there is an issue on this one. This is a rarity, but there is an issue on this one. And so if we can put this in context a little bit and take a look at it and see if we need to address this with the professional community, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Great.
Jim, we qualify bidders. Is past performance part of what you need to have to qualify, or is it only based on just the financial considerations and bonding?
No, now, these are professional services. We pre-qualify contractors, and there's a process you go for, and you cannot bid on our projects unless you're pre-qualified. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about professional services here.
Okay.
And so this is a professional selection process we go through, and yes, past performance is a factor that comes up, ability to do the work, their concept and ability to, of the project as we go forward. There's a lot of things that go into that, but we can sit down and talk about this, if there is some things we do that need to change in the contract terms as we go forward.
Yes, Skip?
Are you saying that if you have a consultant that makes a recommendation based upon their professional designs or information that's provided to them, and at some point in time they give a dollar figure in reference to the cost, what do you come up with this issue of negligence or liquidated damages based upon a change of the minds of those individuals who have ultimately decided anyway?
In this case, it's more than just changing your mind, though, Skip. In this case, they missed the number of square feet by, what, 30,000 square feet? Something like that.
Forty.
Forty thousand square feet. It's more than just changing their mind. I mean...
I think the bigger question is not this one in particular. I think we're going to go forward. I think Councilman Shadid said that exactly right. We're going to go do this. I think the bigger question is all of us have sat here and listened to studies that we wondered why we paid for it. I think we've all sat here and just thought, is this, is this really, is this important? Do we really gain anything? I'm not going to point any particular study, but I think every one of us would, can look at times we've sat here and thought, what is really this about? I mean, what, because they didn't shed any light on anything? They didn't tell us anything we didn't already know? Maybe that's, maybe that's the point, is to be told what you already know, to give yourself some cover or basis, or cover's a bad choice of words, but some basis for continuing to do something. I think, number one, we do too many studies, number one, and two, I think the idea that the people that do the study ought to have some responsibility for their product. I think both of those are relevant things that we can talk about. If the majority of the council does not think we do too many studies, we're going to continue to do them, and I'm going to sit through them, and the world's not going to come to an end one way or another, but I think it's important that we maybe start to look at how many we do and the value of those that we get because of how much they cost and how often they're just kind of a snapshot when the reality turns out to be somewhat different from that. I don't want to point out anyone in particular, because frankly, I can't point out one in particular except this one, and we've already talked about that. We're going to fix this one. But I think we, I think just it's a gut feeling. I think we probably do too many. We pay too much, and in large measure, we don't receive what we want out of them, or what we ought to want out of many of them. I think the next time I get one of those, I'll raise my hand and say, "This one wasn't, I've been, my time has been abused by listening to something that I think I could have done myself on a big chief tablet and a crayon overnight." And I think we've all seen a couple of those, and I think that's the bigger point. I appreciate the fact that Councilman Shadid has accepted the fact that perhaps he personalized the last time a little bit more than he should have, but I think I don't want to lose the larger point that I think is being made by it. And that's just a commentary. We don't have to do anything about it today, but it's just a commentary on, as we move forward. Maybe that's a place where we could save some money and save some time.
Larry?
Being a consultant myself and having been called on to make studies, when you're projecting things out into the future, there's uncertainty or risk. This particular decision as to what to do before the 2007 bond program was done was very well vetted by the council, by staff, and by an engineering study. Unfortunately, everybody involved missed, I think you said, Jim, somebody said 30,000 square foot, okay?
Yes.
Everybody missed that, so everybody that touched that had, quote, "skin in the game," unquote. Including staff. Including staff. And so it was an honest oversight. When you start looking for people to have this kind of a skin in the game, what you're going to do, and I think if you want to turn it to the professional committee to look at, you're going to see that consultants who are called on to make estimates in the future will increase their cost at the front end to cover their own insurance requirements for that kind of a, kind of a payback. So that's the other side of this thing, what you're doing, and if you have a qualified consultant who is giving his or her best estimate, then that's probably the best protection you've got in a very uncertain world. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah. Well, I could see a unique case where the stakes are so high that perhaps you'd want to have some sort of guarantee that the numbers are meaningful. I don't know if this is necessarily fall into that category, but, you know, we deal with some very large-scale projects from time to time. I don't think it's something that we should just assume that we're never going to imply or apply, and I know other cities have done it, but it's, I think it's, I think it's a fairly rare occasion when the stakes are so high that you just, it cannot be, mistakes cannot be made like this one. Because I think what we're saying is if we applied the standard we're talking about to every project we do, we'd end up paying more, because 99% of the time, this situation doesn't occur.
And from my experience from years ago, when I was a consultant, years ago, the consultants generally rely upon what's called AIA standard documents, and it's what they're in professional liability insurance is based upon. And if you go outside the limits of those AIA professional documents, it's, they will have problems signing those documents. I just, because their insurance carrier will have problems signing those documents. That doesn't mean we can't address the issue and go look at and see what we can do there.
Okay. That said, we still have two options before us, on item 8F1 or 2. And item 8F1 is generally to use the MAPS 3 use tax money for capital improvements, as we have discussed before, and then item F2 would be to use those dollars in the same manner, but those monies would then be paid back by expected additional revenue coming from increased fines that would be applied to traffic issues and things like that. I think last week, I expressed an interest in using 1. I don't necessarily like the idea of raising the price of speeding ticket if that's what we chose to do. I think they're high...
I think they're high enough. And I'm also a little bit unclear about how raising the price would guarantee that the money's going to be accumulated. I know our budget people are really good at projecting money that's going to come in, but in this case, I don't think it's necessarily necessary. Is that an appropriate term? Necessarily necessary?
Works for me.
This is just for open discussion right now. I'm for F1.
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Since we don't have a plan to replenish or repay that fund under item number 1, the talk last week or previously, wasn't there some discussion that there would be some alternative ways to replenish the fund so that we could continue on an annual basis to make additions to the public safety fleet? Is that...
Well, the use tax over the life of MAPS 3 would generate about 70 to 80 million dollars, is what we're anticipating. So, this will take us out for seven or eight years in the future, is it seven or eight, eight or nine, somewhere along those lines. And if we go with option 1, it will take one year off of that. If it's eight or nine, it'll be seven or eight. And so, that's where we'll be ending up. At some point in time, that use tax is finite and will deplete and we won't have another option. There could be another city initiative, it could be, and I'm not going to say MAPS 4, but there could be another initiative out there. We've had that penny in place for a couple of decades now and have used that use tax.
But if we don't have something like that, then we would just go back into the general fund to pay for it. We will not...
We will have a funding issue at some point down the line around...
But we won't ever sacrifice a year's worth of fleet replacements.
That's not our intent at all.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
What we will do is have to address how we're going to fund it in the future, one year earlier.
And we could, at the end of this term, decide at that point to raise the fees for parking tickets. We don't have to do that now if we selected option 1.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Larry?
I prefer option 1 also, but I do think there's, we need to separately consider whether or not to raise the speeding fee because from the information that's provided, and if there's somebody here that can clarify this for me, but from the information that I've been provided, the state has increased the administrative requirements for the speeding up to 10 miles an hour, and our costs have increased to the point that our current costs, which we're talking, the court costs for that speeding infraction is actually now less than the expense that it cost us to administer it. And I don't think we should be doing that.
I don't think that's true at this point in time. I think our court costs, our revenues are, let's, I'll let Stacy address that.
Good morning. Part of what you say is correct, that it does cost us more to do the work on speeding 1 to 10 than it used to. Over time, with salary increases and expenses going up, that gap will get smaller and eventually there will be a time where we will have to come forward. At the current time, based on the current levels of ticket writing, we're okay. But at some point, since court costs, what we bring in for court costs do cover the cost of prosecution, there will be a gap if expenses go up.
Okay.
One other indirectly related comment. Whenever I do go to the neighborhood association meetings in Ward 5, it seems like a common concern is speeding within the neighborhoods and a lack of enforcement. So, I can't say whether or not an increase of, say, $11 for this minimum speeding ticket will help curtail the amount of speeding, but regardless of whether or not we increase it, I do wish we could get back to a higher level of enforcement of speeding, especially in the neighborhoods. It's just a common concern in every neighborhood that I go into, so...
Well, you know, it's a good reminder that if people are having those issues, they should call you or call City Hall and, you know, we can put a higher level of enforcement into a neighborhood situation and see if we can't kind of address their needs. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes, and I know the police department is very responsive. When those areas are identified, they always send officers out to patrol that. But just a general statement, that neighborhoods are always concerned about speeding, so thank you.
Maybe we could ask, in that regard, we could ask Mr. Black, to come back with something to let us know if we could increase the fine for speeding inside a neighborhood. I mean, if we could define the really residential streets separately from arterial streets or whatever and have a higher fine for speeding inside neighborhoods, I mean, as a, as a way to deal with that. I have that same question all the time, too, but people don't like the high speed in the, down their street.
I don't have my expert here is Cindy Richards, so I'll let Stacy answer that question, but we'll keep...
Be the partial expert on that. We actually have a charge of speeding in residential area, and it's in the ordinances now.
How much is it in relation to this?
Speeding in a residential area, $202. So, it's got a bigger bite because it's a residential area.
Is that any speeding or is that 1 to 10 or is that just speeding period?
That's any speeding in residential area.
And you potentially could raise that if you wanted to, up to 500 feet.
That's high enough. We're back to enforcement.
Yeah.
All right, back to the item at hand, item 8F1 or 2.
Yeah, I just have, this is, again, philosophical, I guess, but the question I have is, what, in going forward, what is the threshold for going back to the public? I think in this case, I think this probably would have passed no matter what number you put on the bond, 35, 40, 45 million. I mean, it passed by 80%. It probably would have passed no matter what, but the fact is, we didn't put those numbers. We put 35 million. So, at what point do you go back to the people? And it just seems like in the past, we've kind of been all over the board, and I'm wondering in the future what happens. When the arena, we had a mayor's election about whether to go forward or back. Meg, I know, has dealt on the sports facility. We didn't bring as much revenue in as we thought, so we just had to change and cut back on the sports facility. I thought Pat brought up a good point on the $30 million contingency when he argued maybe that should just go back to the people or let the people decide what to do about it. The mayor brought up about projects that are too big to fail. I mean, the Convention Center Hotel, if that, you know, city after city after city has been, has had their studies be off, and it may not be negligent, but St. Louis, Austin, I mean, they have been off by wild amounts. And then, so then, what do you do at that point? Do you go back to the people? Do you borrow from another sales tax like MAPS 3 use? I mean, what is, what would be the policy for future shortfalls with either Convention Center Hotel or the different MAPS projects, which may be a real possibility?
I think I can answer. It's a complex question, but actually, option 5 was that possibility, Councilman, to go back to the voters to get a supplemental bond issue for this or to put it into the next bond issue. That was actually option 5 that we chose not to go forward with. That was the option. We, when we get into budget situations, you know, you have revenue risk and you have expense risk, and you always try to manage. I mean, that's the challenges we go forward with MAPS 3 is to keep it all, all within, you know, that side of things. Right now on MAPS 3, we're getting revenue in excess of what we projected on, and we're doing really good on that side of things. And the expense risk, you know, we haven't even scratched the surface on that where we're going. And so, the key is to make sure that we set the expectations and that we live within the budget that we have forward. Project management is a large, large issue, and it's one, quite frankly, that historically the city's done pretty well with. MAPS for kids, we did a great job. The revenue was within a couple of million from what we originally projected, and we're going to bring that, all the projects completed and have a small surplus left over on that project. But we're constantly watching the scope. So, the key is to watch the scope. And as you set forth, those parameters, you live within those parameters. If, for example, we do a Convention Center Hotel and we decide that it's got to be X amount of rooms and the price per room is going to be X amount, we've got to make sure that we don't have more rooms than that and we don't spend more per room, you know, and we live within, you know, the parameters that we set for ourselves. This scope creep is a huge issue on all these projects. I can tell you, major project after major project of things that we built within the city that would have been nice things to add at the time. I can tell you what was cut out of the Civic Center that nobody really remembers, but people thought they had to have at the time. I can tell you things were on the canal that were not ultimately put in, but we just, there were some stakeholders that thought we just had to have. The river's a great example. Right now, I know that Councilman Mars and Councilman McAdie from sitting on the oversight board, there's all kinds of desires. We've got 60 million set aside for the river and there's, we've got good ideas well beyond $60 million on that, and it's all good stuff, but we know what the budget is and we need to live within that. So, as we go forward on those, the key is to understand what the projects are, what the parameters are, and use good solid program management as we go along. But if there is something that happens, can't tell you what it's going to be, then you have to make those decisions. We have to go and take some money out of the use tax. You potentially have to raise some fees and get some other revenue to enhance it. You know, you address those issues as they come to fruition, but the key is not to let them come to fruition as you manage your programs before you get there.
Gary?
Well, I was just going to say that I think on bond issues, I think the people vote the project. We put some dollar amount in there. Typically, it's a dollar amount for a group of projects, but I think they vote on what the project is and rely on us to either fund it or not fund it. We have instances throughout all of our bond projects, whether it be streets or fire stations or anything that we do where it costs more to do it than we originally estimated, and this council has to figure out whether they're going to get the money to do it. And it costs, and conversely, sometimes projects come under and that money's available to do like projects in the same bond package and so forth. So, I think moving the money around is what the citizens expect this council to do. They just vote the project. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not concerned that if a project costs more to do than was originally estimated that we need to get the citizens to weigh back in on that. They've already voted the project. I think that the task we have is finding the money for it at that point in time. So, and I, I'll support option 1 also, and I'm ready to make a motion if you want it, Mayor.
How about it?
I'll move option 1.
All right. Comments or questions before we vote on item 8F1? Cast your votes. We have a series of legal issues presented to us today, and I understand we do not need executive session on these items. If council would like, we can go into executive session on any of them, but if not, we'll start with item 8G.
Mayor, the first three, G, H, and I, all have to do with condemnation cases down in Cleveland County to get easements for waterline projects, I believe, down there for the utilities. And so, they're all similar.
Yes, and we previously had an executive session on this. It just depends on whether the council has any additional questions or not.
Okay? The motion is to move item 8G to, no, it's to pass item 8G, not move it to executive session. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. How about H?
I'll move H.
Cast your vote on 8H. Passed unanimously. 8I?
Move I.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. How about J?
And J is just an auto accident, a settlement on an auto accident.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K?
K is just appointing coun, outside council to represent city employees, and K and L are both the same thing.
Okay. Voting on 8K. Passed unanimously. And 8L? Need a motion?
Move I.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is claims recommended for denial. No one has signed up. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8M? All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. How about a motion on this one item?
This is second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Item A and B both come from the legislative committee. I guess that's Larry and Pete and myself serve on the legislative committee, and we have met with our consultants and brought these items forward. And of course, we can always add to these as the legislative session gets closer or actually even during the legislative session. So, it's just kind of our intent for the current time period.
Jane Abraham is here to highlight both programs for us.
So, we will have a presentation.
I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager in the City Manager's Office. And I'll run through this fairly quickly. This is our legislative agenda for the, for 2012, state and federal. First, I want to just talk a little bit about the process that we use to select and adopt issues, which most of you are familiar with this, but some of the new council members have not been through this process before, so we'll just kind of go over the steps that we take to create our legislative agenda. First, a request for issues is sent out to the Department Heads in August from the City Manager, and those issues are then researched and reviewed, and the recommendations are brought to council typically in October to the council legislative committee. And then, the committee receives and reviews that information and votes to recommend issues for adoption to the city council, which is what we're doing today. In addition, other issues will arise during the legislative session, particularly the state legislative session, and they can then be brought to the committee for consideration. I won't read these to you. We'll just kind of, you've got information in your packets that describes them more fully, but just in general, the priority items that we select are typically larger issues, and they tend to be the same really from year to year as far as overarching issues that kind of affect the city, that have a, that the state legislature has a significant impact on, from an operational standpoint. And then, we have initiative items that we, that the committee votes on that are brought forward, and these are actual issues where we direct our legislative consultants to seek authors for bills on these issues.
And often, these are in reaction to legislative action taken the previous year and things that come forward. There's a couple that fall on that line, or some things that have passed previously that haven't worked out real well or that we didn't know about that got through that we're trying to clean up.
Exactly. A good example of that is to restore the availability of municipal special elections in December of odd years. There was a bill passed last year to try to streamline operations to make sure that there was enough lead time for, for elections to have the troops overseas be able to vote in primaries, et cetera. And this was kind of inserted into that bill even though it had nothing really to do with that process. It was just part of that. So, we're trying to fix that issue this year.
The dog kennel issue would also fall within that category.
Exactly. And that law was passed several years ago, and now there are people wanting to start a new business, have a dog grooming business that could serve people either in midtown or in downtown, some of the new residential areas there, but this, this law is prohibiting that from happening. In addition to the priority and the initiative items, there are several support items that we have each year, and these are generally issues that are, either some other entity is taking the lead on such as ACOG or OML, other entities that we know of that have brought these issues forward and perhaps have asked the city to support them. We've got, we've got several of those this year, and so, these also can tend to be kind of issues that'll happen from, get carried over from year to year. On our federal legislative issues, these are not broken down into those specific categories. They're just kind of all, well, they're basically in priority order, but as you can see, our first priority issue is the enactment of Main Street Fairness or Marketplace Equity legislation, and this is something that we've been working on for several years. At this point in time, it's kind of exciting. We're further along than we've been probably ever on this issue. There's a House bill and a Senate bill that have bipartisan support. There's support in the retail community to make this happen, and one of the chief opponents to the legislation was Amazon, and they have flipped their position and they're now in favor of this legislation. So, that's kind of exciting. So that's kind of exciting. The second issue was a requirement for us to withhold 3% of vendor payments for federal taxes. And this bill has passed both the House and the Senate and is now awaiting signature of the President. So that's also pretty exciting. This issue may be resolved before we even get to 2012. So that would also be good for the city. And then this just goes through the different, we've been trying to accomplish greater flexibility for transit. That's something we've been working on for several years. And so then, in terms of the calendar or what's coming up with our legislative events and issues, bill filing occurs just right around the corner, December and January, which is why we adopt our issues in November. And then the city will hold a state legislative briefing where we invite the legislators that are all in our city limits and talk to them about our legislative issues, and just about the city in general, what our projects are, what we're doing. And the session starts February 6. And then with Congress, they are targeted for adjournment here in December and start again in January. And we'll also schedule a briefing then with our federal delegation at the beginning of the year. Did you have any questions or comments?
Just kind of looking through the dates. Yeah. Larry?
Jane, if you could go back in the federal to the first slide.
Uh huh.
Okay. Item three, their funding for expansion. There's a key word. As if I'm correct, Jim, expansion. The voters in Oklahoma City voted $130 million for a downtown streetcar system, a modern streetcar system.
Yes.
That will be built irrespective of any additional funding that we might get from the federal government.
That's correct, although we are trying to use that to leverage it to do additional streetcar funding beyond that.
And we're trying, that's a good word, leverage it. There's $10 million in that 130 that was set aside for a hub, which would be the hub to initially support the downtown streetcar system. But we're looking for additional funds to build a multi, I'm going to call multimodal hub for a light rail and high-speed rail and all the rest from additional sources.
Now, that's a Tiger grant application, a Tiger III grant application that we submitted last month.
Right.
But on top of that, we're also looking at leveraging the monies that we have available with federal dollars to expand the scope of the downtown modern streetcar.
But the original scope that was put into the MAPS III initiative will be built irrespective of all this federal activity.
If you'd like, we'd call that a worst-case scenario. We'd like to do that regardless, and we hope to enhance that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, sir.
I would certainly agree that that's the worst-case scenario. On the same page we're looking at, the top one is the enactment of Federal Street Fairness Marketplace Equity Legislation. I had a conversation with Councilman Greenwell this week after he returned from, which he'll be here back in a second, I'm sure. He returned from a meeting of CPA, accounting firm, meeting in Washington. And he was very fearful that the price that we may be looking at having to pay to get this done is that the collection agency for this would be the federal government, as opposed to the money being distributed to us. And he said, and I really agree with him, that that may be the first step toward a national sales tax. And for a state like Oklahoma, where the municipalities rely so heavily on sales tax, a national sales tax would just be devastating, in my opinion, for us. I mean, I just think it would just really hurt. I'm quoting you, David.
Well, I think Councilman Greenwell is probably going to give us a presentation on his trip here in a few minutes. I think he's going to talk about that later on in the meeting.
Okay, all right.
But that's not what's proposed at this time. That doesn't mean you couldn't grow into that. I'm not saying those fears are unwarranted, but that is not what's being proposed at this time.
Well, I just want to be sure that from our legislative people, that's a really bad, that would really be a bad outcome. That'd be winning the battle and losing the war, in my opinion, to get the sales tax and then have it collected by the federal government. I just, that'd be a disaster for us, long-term. The other question I had had to do with the state issues. I personally, and as has with the assistance of one of the attorneys in the municipal council's office, and Councilman Shadie have been monitoring efforts on the part of the Ethics Commission to try to change the ethics laws as they apply to municipalities, and at least force disclosure of the contributors to city council races. And I'd like to see, we talked about that briefly, and in fact, the person that needed to be there at our last legislative meeting wasn't there to really talk about it in depth. But I'd like to see us at least monitor that, and that be officially part of what we're doing, because it can, it could change, once that's put on the table to change anything that has to do with municipal elections, the possibility exists that they could change a lot of things. And we need to be sure that we don't, in an effort to try to get disclosure, we don't change the whole way our system's set up, because I think our system works very well, except with that one exception.
So you'd like to adopt this?
Well, we talked about it, and I think the next leg, I just want to make everybody aware that it didn't get on here, because I brought it up at the last meeting, and there really wasn't the people there that we needed to talk about. So we didn't really vet it very much. We just, I just brought it up. But I'd like to see it. I don't want anybody to be surprised if we come back after our next meeting and say we're going to at least monitor the activities of the Ethics Commission and any legislation they might introduce that will impact municipal elections. Because there is certainly a possibility they will try to get some legislation introduced that would impact how we operate our elections.
If I could just speak to that as well, I think there is some urgency, and I would appeal to the Legislative Committee in that we address deficiencies in the Political Subdivisions Act. I think this last municipal election blew it a whole mile wide in that Political Subdivisions Act. It showed that it's completely inadequate for modern municipal elections. We're 16 months away from city council elections, and unless the legislator modifies that this year, I think there will be some chaos in the next city council elections. What happened here is you had 16 PACs that participated in the municipal, in the city council elections. Eleven of them just declined to file. I mean, it wasn't that there wasn't disclosure. I mean, they just, they were required to file with Francis, and they just said, no. And then the Gazette and media contacted them and said, you haven't filed, you need to file, please file. And they still said, no. There's some boundary testing. I mean, these groups are, you know, much less, you know, having their form be filled out correctly. They're just saying, we're not even going to file. Then, we've spent seven months trying to figure out, well, who even has authority? The Ethics Commission, the Subdivisions Act says that they don't have authority over an individual candidate filing. That would go to the district attorney. But the language leaves out committee. So who has authority over these PACs or committees making independent expenditure is in limbo. Nobody, Pete and I went, and at the very last minute, the Attorney General chimed in and said, you don't have the authority. I mean, we've spent seven months trying to figure out who has jurisdiction over this question. The district attorney is David Prater, and I hope that we speak with David Prater. He is studying the issue and doesn't have opinions, as his staff is continuing to study it. But what's clear is that with Citizens United, the Political Subdivisions Act, as it now stands, is going to, is, at least parts of it are unconstitutional. So that part is going to get modified this year. The risk is that the part that deals with municipal elections, which is wholly inadequate, in speaking with Mr. Prater, I mean, it's the part that talks about what he does with violations or infractions of city council elections is, I think it's just a couple of sentences long. It's vague. It doesn't spell out what the penalties are. It doesn't spell out exactly what his jurisdiction is, or how he's, you know, parameters that he's supposed to operate within. So it's wholly inadequate. And we just have this year for the state legislature to modify it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this, or other items on the Legislative Committee's work? All right. Jane, are you through?
I am through.
All right. Thanks very much. I have a motion to adopt item 10A. This is the state legislative's program. And a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then a motion on item 10B. This would be the federal program. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Other items from council. Skip, you want to go first?
No.
Okay. David?
Well, I had the pleasure, in Skip's absence-- Sorry. Thank you, Francis. To attend the grand opening of the Caesar Chavez School. And Skip, just want to let you know, they really missed you, and there's an open invitation to you out there anytime you can. And Ms. Morris, I believe, is the principal's name. She said she can call a school-wide assembly rather quickly, so anytime you can come out there. It's a great example of what have the funds from the MAPS for kids. The kids are very excited about the new school. The parents are very excited about it. There's a lot of pride in that school, and it was just a great opportunity. And one other item I'd like to mention is, I really truly believe that Superintendent Carl Springer is really dedicated towards the improvement of the school district, and that is so critical to the success of Oklahoma City. And I know everyone up here is concerned about the continued success and improvement of the Oklahoma City schools. And anything we can do to help them, I think we really should make that a priority going forward. So that's the good news, and this isn't bad news necessarily. What I've got up on the screen, if you could follow me, but two weeks ago, as in Washington, I served on the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants IRS Practice and Procedures Committee. So we meet with the Internal Revenue Service twice a year and also congressional representatives. And the first one just identifies some of the concerns that are leading towards the overall concern that I'll get to at the very end. This first item just shows our continued unemployment. In part, that can be attributable to jobs being shifted overseas, as well as corporate America being a little bit concerned about making the additional investments necessary to increase unemployment. The disturbing line, and I know it's difficult to see, is that top one, which is underemployment. Those are individuals who are having to work part-time, looking for full-time work, as well as individuals who've just given up on looking for employment. We've never had, well, we've had as high levels, but not at such sustained periods of time. So, Boyd, if we could move on to the next page. The next one is the federal budget. This is the real big problem. It's historically been around 2%. As you can see, the projections now are going to be well in line with 8%. That's the percentage of the deficit to the gross national product. That may not sound like a big number, but it's not sustainable. I mean, we can't continue on as a country if we get to that level. Boyd, the next one, please, and one after this one, please. I don't want to spend too much time on all these economic charts, but they are very interesting. Public held federal debt as percentage of GDP. That, too, is problematic. Even President Obama's administration has suggested by the end of this decade, it'll be approaching 90%. Again, that's not sustainable. And so the next slide, please, is, oh, okay. One of the problems we're having on a corporate level is we are no longer competitive from a corporate income tax rate. The red line is the U.S. current corporate tax rate. We're at 35%. Back in 1986, when President Reagan lowered the rates from approximately 50 down to 35%, we were one of the leading developed countries as far as its corporate tax rate. But the blue line is the rest of the industrial nations in the world. We are no longer competitive. You'll see, we need to drop that down to 25% just to remain competitive with the rest of the world. Boyd, the next slide, please. And so this is the final one. This is the interesting one. With all the bad news, Congress has to deal with this federal deficit. We can no longer just ignore it and kick it down the road. And what I'm concerned about, and what I've shared with Councilman White, is if we are successful in getting this internet sales agreement passed at the national level, it would just make sense to let the federal government administer it, and, you know, they'd never do anything for free. And the costs have been estimated as high as 25% of the revenue that may be collected from this will stay with the federal government just to cover their cost to administer that. But even more importantly, it creates the framework that would allow a national sales tax. And this map shows there's only about a dozen countries in the whole world that do not currently have a national sales tax or VAT of that. You know, no telling how long Greenland can hold out prospects for the U.S. It is so easy to slip in a national sales tax compared to increasing corporate or individual income tax. So by 2013, this deficit is just going to be right in our face, and we can no longer avoid it. It just keeps eating up more and more of the total federal budget, the servicing of that debt. We are probably going to be looking at some type of the national sales tax. A few years ago, as recently as four or five, there was thought that if we ever did have a national sales tax, it could be used to replace parts of our current income tax. And even some of the presidential candidates have suggested that, lowering individual and corporate tax rates, instituting a national sales tax. And I'd be for that. If it meant tax simplification, lower tax rates, I think that would be helpful from a economic standpoint. But what you get is, once the federal government gets into this game, they then begin to dictate everybody else's activity in regards to sales tax. It, I'm just anticipating, would make it more difficult for the city of Oklahoma City and any other city or state to attempt to increase their sales tax when the federal government is in here, and they're assessing two, three, four, five cents sales tax on top of our other income taxes. So all I'm saying is, when we ask for these things, like let's begin taxing internet sales, I'm just trying to show what the consequences may be down the road. And then finally, you know, this concept of quid pro quo, when you tax somebody, it's for a reason. Well, these out-of-state companies, they don't have a facility here, say in Oklahoma City or in the state of Oklahoma. And I know it's the consumer who's paying the sales tax. But normally, you don't burden these companies for collecting sales tax when they don't have a facility, they're not, which is not being protected by the police or fire. They don't have employees using the roads and things like that. So they're being assessed a tax and not being present in our state to benefit from a lot of the services. Again, I know the tax is ultimately paid by the consumer, but it certainly is a burden to collect that. So that's all I wanted to share. I do think that the federal government is going to be looking very seriously about instituting some type of the national sales tax, and we just need to be prepared for that day and know how to respond should they go forward with that idea. Thank you.
Pete?
All right, Larry?
Just thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank three neighborhoods for having great neighborhood meetings last week. Meridian Hills, also River Park, and Windsor Forest. And out of the River Park, Jim, if you would, pass along to Chief City, my thanks to Sergeant Burkine from the Santa Fe Division came out and talked about protecting your property in your neighborhood. And he made the statement that the best law enforcement weapon that we have are neighbors who are alert and who are interested in what's going on in the neighborhood. When I got to the Windsor Forest neighborhood meeting a few minutes later, Sergeant Epplely from the Heffernan Division was there, meeting with the neighbors, and he echoed the same thing. So my encouragement would be, if you're not involved in a neighborhood association as a citizen, please do. And neighborhood associations, if you're not having-- And neighborhood associations, if you're not having, the police come to your meetings and share ideas and listen to concerns, they're available and they do a great job. On one other thing, this Thursday happens to be Thanksgiving Day, and in the conversation dealing with what is going on with downtown transit and our federal lobbying, I heard that the words used by a couple of people up here, well, this is the worst-case scenario. And I'd just like to use that as a little springboard. During this time of the year, I think we as citizens need to turn it around and look at what is the best-case scenario for our lives that we can be thankful for during this season. We are blessed people to live in Oklahoma City, in the state of Oklahoma, in this country at this time, and we should look at the glass being half-full and thank the Lord for the blessings that we have. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks Larry. Ed?
Yeah, I just want to echo exactly what Larry's talking about. Tonight at the Temple Benai Israel on 49th and North Penn is an interfaith event, speaking about gratitude. It's the city's longest-held interfaith service. It started in 1946 and has happened every year since, Unitarian, Jewish, Roman Catholic, Baha'i, Muslim, many, many faiths all come together. You know, every religion gets this, that gratitude is so important, every religion emphasizes it, every religion wants to try and evoke that emotion more than any other. And my... Technical. We just started looking at this like in the last 10 years, because we've been so focused on negative psychology, but in the last 10 years, we started doing a study like in 2000, on gratitude, and low and behold, it really predicted somebody's well-being, somebody's health, and so then we did another, and another, and another, and another. And now we have this mountain of evidence over the last 10 years that gratitude can predict somebody's wellness, their health, more than any other character trait. It's simply more important psychologically than anything else, and so I think Larry is dead on. Those of us who work with those in, with drug and alcohol issues, and we've got 4,300 employees, there'll be about 500 city employees who struggle with that, the next six weeks will be a very difficult time, really that's the key. I mean, I don't think you can get out of that, escape without that, without utilizing gratitude. And so, I would wish everyone Thanksgiving, a happy Thanksgiving. I express my gratefulness to the council, my life is better getting to work with all of you, to the city staff, I'm just impressed with everyone's dedication, to all the students and journalists out there who make our democracy possible, and those who've come and participated in the process, I'm grateful. And happy Thanksgiving.
Gary?
Well, on that note, I want to invite everybody down Friday, after you've done your Black Friday shopping and you need some, need to wear off some of the turkey, have the mayor's Christmas tree lighting going on in Bricktown, and the, following that is the Devon Holiday Boat Parade down on the river. So, tree lighting, fireworks, boat parade, Santa Claus, going to be a good night in Oklahoma City.
That's right. Tree lighting at 5:15 in Bricktown, and then the boat parade after that. Thank you for mentioning it. City manager reports?
Well, Gary gave us a nice segue because Jill Brown Delogia is here from BOKC to tell us a little bit about Downtown in December. Jill?
Yes, Downtown in December, it's officially launched. We should start calling it Downtown in November/December, but it's a 50-day event and we have about 20 different activities that are going on, so I will scroll through them quickly here. But we're now in the 10th year of Downtown in December, and it's expanded and we're really excited about this year. This year, the presenting sponsor is Devon Energy, and all of our activities are family-friendly. And we have so many sponsors to thank, I don't think I could even get through them, but basically all the sponsors make it possible for us to do these activities in the community. Here they are. And the Devon Ice Rink is our big event. It says that it's open November 21st, but they had a little coolant problem, so this is a picture of the rink last Friday, and I heard this morning that we do have actual ice and that it will be skateable here in the next couple of days. It will be open through February 4th, it's now at the Myriad Gardens in the permanent rink area there. And we have it heavily programmed throughout the season, we'll have live DJs and radio personalities on the weekends, we also have some professional ice dancers coming out, and ballet, and all kinds of guests coming out. And the cost to participate at the ice rink is $10, that includes your skate rental, if you bring your own, it's a little bit cheaper. And if you have questions or would like to book a skating party, you can call the Myriad Chesapeake Energy Snow Tubing is always popular, it's back again this year, it's at Red Hawks Field at Bricktown. We have a big adult slide and then we have a smaller kid's slide, and I took our two-and-a-half year old there last year and she went down the kid's slide, and so it's fine for all ages. And it costs $10 for a 90-minute session, and you can now purchase the tickets online and reserve your space for later in the day or later in the week. I think last year some sessions sold out, so that's a new feature. Again, you can book your private parties for that as well. And that opens this Friday. Sandridge Energy Christmas Tree is on display already, that's a picture of it last week, and it'll be lit, as Gary mentioned, this Friday at the mayor's tree lighting, and that will be at 5:15, and we are going to have live music and a band, children's crafts, games, free food, and cookies, face painting, magician, it'll be really a great event. And One Main Financial Bricktown Canal Lights, they stepped up this year and they're a big sponsor, so the lights on the canal are bigger and better than they've ever been. We had the lighting ceremony this past Saturday and it was really fun, we gave away popcorn and movie tickets. And the Oklahoman is sponsoring its Wimgo Holidays on the Canal, and that is free water taxi rides every Thursday through Sunday starting this weekend. And that's in the evening, 6 to 9:30 PM. And you don't need a ticket, you can just go down to the dock and they'll let you ride on the boat. OG&E is sponsoring the garden lights, now that the new Myriad Gardens has been renovated and ready for display. And those will be lit this weekend as well, and they will also have free Crystal Bridge admission every Sunday night from 6 to 9 PM, and that includes Christmas night. So, if you're ready to get out and about after all the festivities, that would be a fun event. The Sandridge Santa Run is December 10th, it's a Saturday at 9:00 AM, and it's starting at Leadership Square, and it's a 5K race, we also have a one-mile race for a family, and a kids' dash. And you can register on DowntowninDecember.com. Rumble will be there. Oklahoma City Community Foundation is again doing Free Museum Sundays, and four of the downtown museums are participating, including the Oklahoma City Museum of Art, National Memorial Museum, the Banjo Museum, and the Gaylord Pickens Oklahoma Heritage Museum. And if you go to DowntowninDecember.com, it lists which museums are open on which Sundays, and it's free admission for everyone from 1 to 6 PM. Devon Saturdays with Santa is a brand-new event this year, and it'll be every Saturday starting this Saturday for four weeks, noon to 3:00 PM at the new Myriad Gardens Pavilion over by the children's area. And Santa will be there, so you can take pictures and his sleigh. We also have a mailbox, so kids can write letters to Santa and put them in there, and we will mail them for them. And we have arts and crafts going on and all kinds of activities, Phil the Penguin from the Philharmonic and some ballet dancers from Nutcracker will make appearances as well. Sonic Segway Santa is back again, he'll be roaming around town, you may have already seen him out on his Segway, he's really fast. He is going to be coming to all of the Downtown in December events and he'll pass out Sonic gift cards, and he will be tweeting his location from Downtown OKC Inc., so that's new this year, it'll make it easier to find him and hunt him down for those gift cards. Other events that we have going on through Downtown in December, Automobile Alley Lights on Broadway, shall be lit up this week, and it's the big curtains on Automobile Alley that are really beautiful, they've added a couple of buildings this year. The OK Cityscape Lego Exhibit is again at 10th and Broadway like it was last year, that is $5 for adults and $3 for kids to go in there, and they've also added some buildings to their exhibit. New event, Midtown Holiday Lights, they're at Plaza Court. We're also supporting Oklahoma City Ballet's Nutcracker and the Philharmonic's Christmas Show, Skirven Holiday Celebrations, which includes their gingerbread mansions, and they have a holiday high tea and a Christmas brunch. The Holiday River Parade, Devon Energy's Holiday River Parade, that was mentioned earlier, is this Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, right after the tree lighting ceremony, so you can do both. And Oklahoma City Barons are kicking off their season, and they have a Sing with Santa Night on December 9th, that would be really fun, and Arts Council Opening Night is part of Downtown in December this year. And we have all of our information, very detailed, all the pricing and dates are DowntowninDecember.com, and we have a new communications person who's very good at social media, so on Facebook and Twitter you can keep up with all of it as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
That's a lot. I'd just like to start the information getting out for those that come down to Opening Night and stay for the big midnight event, because of the construction and stuff downtown, that is moving this year, Arts Council is putting that on in the Myriad Gardens now instead of Kerr Park. So, everybody come out and enjoy the new gardens and the fireworks show and all of that for Opening Night. And we'll be getting more information out as we get closer to the time, but don't go up north to Kerr Park, come down to the Myriad Gardens for the finale.
Next Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, is going to talk to us a little bit about Oklahoma's Skydance Bridge. This is a really, really unique project, and it appears from the audience today, we have a design team, that a number of the members are here that are very proud of their project, and it's coming together very fast. A lot of it's fabricated, I think you'll see the erection coming up in a very short time. Eric has pictures and schedules to share, so with that, Eric?
Thank you, and let me go ahead and introduce a few of the members of the design team that are here, they are in this third row with us today, it's several from NKEC and XXL. We've got Hans Bootser, Laurent Mazanat, Doug Klassen, and Stan Carroll, and I also see that they've also got some, maybe, family with them as well, but we welcome them today as we make this update. Also, my appreciation to JC to put together some of the slides, and then we also have a brief video at the end that we'd like to show you, show you what that'll look like when you're on the new I-40. The history of the Skydance Bridge, just some background, Federal Highway Administration required ODOT to provide a pedestrian connection over the newly reconstructed I-40. Design competition was held to select the designer, and that was actually completed and proposals received in March of 2008. Four firms were actually shortlisted for that, and each was challenged, you know, with the design competition to come up with ideas of what the new Skydance Bridge would look like. And the design team, NKEC XXL, was selected in 2008 for the proposal which inspired by the Skydance of the Central Tail Flycatcher, it's the state bird of Oklahoma. Central Park will actually be connected by this new bridge from the model that you see in this next photo, you'll see that on the top of the page, we have the Upper Park, the MAPS 3 Upper Park, on the lower portion, we've got the Lower Park, and you can see the Skydance there in the middle, making that pedestrian connection. The taller wings on the Skydance actually span 192 feet into the air, and there's also a lot of ornamental railing that are on the sides of that for the pedestrians. This is a view of the connection, and I think there's a lot of the questions about, before the park is completed, how will pedestrians actually be able to access the Skydance Bridge? And so if you look at the top of the page, and this is just an excerpt out of the Corps of Shore Plan to give you a visual reference, this is not intended to actually show the actual developments in the area. The new I-40 will be the white area in the middle of the screen, Boulevard at the top, and you'll see the Oklahoma River at the bottom. But there are some existing sidewalks on Harvey Avenue that are identified with this blue line at the top of the page, and so we will actually have access, once the Skydance Bridge is opened, through existing sidewalks on the current infrastructure. The Skydance Bridge is identified in yellow, which will be completed in the next month and a half. We actually will have to construct a small portion of new sidewalk to make the connection to the river, and that's identified in red, that'll take us from Harvey Avenue to Robinson, but then there's a length of existing sidewalk along Robinson. So although this may not be the final concept of the connection, we've talked somewhat about the Harvey Spine concept in the Corps of Shore Plan, and some of the discussions are still underway with the MAPS 3 Park, some of the designs have yet to be engaged. This is a connection that would actually exist immediately with the actual little bit of construction that's needed in the area of red to make that core-to-shore actually a reality. Some of the interesting facts about the bridge, the deck is 20 feet wide, it actually spans 380 feet. Again, I mentioned the height is 192 feet, it's 105 tons, this is the weight of the actual structure itself, there's over 900 cubic yards of concrete that are used during the construction process. Current status, and this is going to go back just a little bit, but in June of this past year, the last parcel that was required to actually build one of the footings for the Skydance Bridge was acquired as a part of the MAPS process. The superstructure was advertised later that month with the bids opened in July. Now you're going to notice that this is quite an aggressive schedule, realizing that this actually was coincidental with the I-40 reconstruction. So, we've seen tremendous progress on the new I-40, and plans are to actually start opening lanes of traffic to that late this year, early next year. So it was necessary for us to expedite the Skydance Bridge construction so that there wouldn't be construction over the top of new traffic that we placed on that new highway. So ODOT received bids for the substructure, this would be the piers and the abutments. In July, OKC awarded the superstructure contract in August, and of course, continued progress. As we go to the next slide, construction began in August on the site prep, the bridge structure and installation of the structure is scheduled for November and December, and I'm going to show you a little more detailed schedule, but there are actually pieces of the bridge that are already on-site and ready for erection.
Eric, stop there for a second. We thought we were going to have a larger window to construct this and later in the year, but because ODOT was ahead of schedule for the construction of their project, we had to, they gave us a very short window to put it in in this December to actually erect it. So we had to do some hustling here midsummer to modify our schedule to accommodate ODOT's window that they were giving us. And again, it's all good news because they were ahead of schedule, we had to push it up, and we had to, had to do some quick, be quick on our feet there for a few days to get it to work, but it is on schedule at this time.
On this slide, it shows that the project's complete by April, but one of the reasons for making the presentation today is, over the next 10 to 12 days, the actual Skydance Bridge structure is going to be erected and made vertical, so that's going to happen here in the next few short weeks. This is a photo of the design team, several of the members that are also present with us today, but this is at WW Steel, so this was all fabricated here locally in Oklahoma City. This is inside their shop, and this is actually a picture of the tail of the bird, and so you can see its massive size and kind of the scope of what we were talking about.
Literally fabricated about two miles from where it's going to be erected.
This is just another opportunity to view the tail of the bird structure?
And you can see the person there, kind of in the middle of the sky, Eric's putting the mouse around, the pointer on it, that gives you some scale to the size of it.
This is the center hub, and to give you some scale on this, again, if you'll follow Jim's comments, you'll see the individual to the right, this is where all of the major components actually come together. The fabrication of this was so critical with all the angled cuts and such, that there was actually a jig, a framework of steel surrounding this while they got all the pieces in alignment prior to actually welding. And so, this photo, they're actually cutting all of the jig away and getting it ready to be transported. This actually is on-site today. This is just a nice plug for Made in the USA, this is one of the base plates of steel that's used on one of the connecting components.
I'll take it as a steel plate.
It's about six inches that you're seeing there, so I've got another picture, I'm going to show you in a minute of an item that is about 6,200 pounds. This is just, again, some of the steel in the shop. This is one of the connecting components, you can see the anchor bolt that is there at the lower part of the screen. This is actually one of those base plates that's actually being fabricated, and so this is about six feet tall, six-inch plate steel, and the weight of this piece alone is 6,200 pounds. And so, we're talking about a very massive structure when we start talking about this bridge. This is one of the wing elements, and again, they were all fabricated in a very large shop on Reno Avenue, WW, and moving on, this is some of the bridge structure that's actually on-site. If you look to the left of the drawing, you'll see one of the abutments for the new Skydance Bridge. These pieces are actually being erected now, and so there's a two-part project here. ODOT did all of the substructure, this would be all the elements that actually make the form of the bridge. Oklahoma City then is basically doing everything above that, so when we talk about the superstructure, that was the Oklahoma City project. This is again to kind of show some scale and relationship of what half of that bridge structure looks like. The center pier, this is half of the new I-40, the center pier is to your right. This is another angle of that abutment. This is the center hub on-site, and so most of the pieces are painted in the shop. Now you'll find that there are some pieces that are not painted as they arrive at the field, there's welding connections that need to be made, and then they'll finish the painting on-site, but most of the pieces are white when they leave. This is that, again, that hub, this is a painted piece, and you'll see where the welds to be made are unpainted, and that's just to assist in... just to assist in the fabrication process. Again, some more of the connections. It's that new center hub there again. But when we talk about what you're going to expect to see over the next couple of weeks in the month of December, now, this is all, has already occurred. The South Span deliveries, the leg deliveries, the north abutments, the east leg deliveries, the north span deliveries, all of those have been completed. All that's work that's on-site. As we look into the later part of the month, moving through November, you'll see that the center hub arrived on November 28th, and they're actually planning to start the east wing erection on December the 1st, the west wing on December the 8th. And so components of the actual bridge are going to be in the air very shortly. But you can expect a lot of work over the next couple of weeks. It's going to be quite iconic for Oklahoma City. It's a very large structure, along with some of the demolition that's occurred in the MAPS III Park. There's just a lot of activity, you know, south of downtown. And so I encourage you to look at that. Obviously, the weather's a little bit inclement, but there's going to be a lot of newness. Now, this is a short video. Once you are on the I-40, and actually crosstown, the new I-40, this is a view that you can expect to see once that bridge is complete.
This is westbound. You're going under shields here.
So again, to the right of the photo will be the Upper Park. To the left of the photo, you'll have the new Lower Park, and then again, that pedestrian connection. So with that, we did want to provide you an update because of the amount of work that would be taking place. Again, a very exciting project. We again thank the representatives from the design team for being with us today, and I can...
Hans, you are under your team. Have some comments you want to make? Okay.
I just appreciate I-40's support. Very exciting in Oklahoma City.
Appreciate your work. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from council about what they've seen? We've been talking about this day on a distant timeline for so long, it is hard to believe that I-40 is actually going to be relocated, and the Oklahoma City Skydance Bridge will be erected, and it's very exciting times. Citizens to be heard. Has anyone signed up to speak, Francis?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ready to adjourn? We're adjourned.